Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the Thursday, June 13th, 2024 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. While you remain standing, we have to pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. The mission of the Portsmouth Public Schools Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Agenda item 3.5 is attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson, here. Ms. Boone, here.
Present.
Ms. Futrell, here.
Here.
Ms. Thomas, here.
Ms. Whitaker, here.
Present. Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, consideration of the agenda for June 13th, 2024, our entertaining motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Ms. Futrell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Issue unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1 is public comment for non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We have three speakers signed up for tonight.
Alright, thank you.
As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the school board of the city of Portsmouth allows time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the school board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of the scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to give their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any form of resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speaker comments can be left with the clerk of the board, and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens to the public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Our first speaker is Mrs. Laura Hamilton, PEA.
Good afternoon Superintendent Dr. Bracy, Dr. White, Dr. Patillo, Vice Chairwoman Atkins, and members of the board. I am Laura Hamilton, President of the Portsmouth Education Association. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks for the opportunity to speak. On behalf of the PEA members, we appreciate your collaborative efforts. We value the relationships we've built and are grateful for the monthly meetings that allow us to express our concerns. We are encouraged by the 7% and look forward to further developments under the leadership to ensure equitable pay and a bright future for Portsmouth Public Schools. While we may not always agree, we respect your commitment to addressing our concerns and working towards our shared goal of providing the best education for our children. Thank you again for your education, for your dedication and support. We look forward to continue our partnership to ensure PPS staff are heard and valued. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our second speaker is Mr. Benjamin Brown, PEA.
Once again, good afternoon to board members and superintendent. We do really appreciate the 7% raise we have, but yet and still, our focus is on increase, and that greatest increase is going to come when we're able to open up the steps and make sure that all our members are at the appropriate step that they should be. With 24 years and only being at step eight, it is a big concern for me and our other members. We're looking forward to the study being done and everything else so we can make sure that part of that study includes that not only are we going to decompress the step, but we're going to move every member to the appropriate step that they should be so they're earning at the level that they should be paid at. That is important for us, and that is important for our members to know and to see that we all are invested in them as well as they invest their time and dedication to the students. We see that there's great things when we come in, and then we start to see the compression of the steps as we move along through, especially at the end. So we just want to make sure that we can assure that our members, any new people that come to work for Portsmouth Public Schools are earning at the top potential. We're losing a lot of people. We train great teachers, but we end up losing them. Our job is not only to represent our members, but we want to make sure that we can keep all the staff that Portsmouth Public School has invested so much time in. The best way to keep that is make sure that they are earning what they should be earning. We want to feel like the city did when they're able to get that big raise for themselves as part of being on the city council. We want to feel that jubilation because although the position hadn't had a raise in 30 years, they haven't been in a position 30 years. But we have teachers and other staff that worked for the public schools that held those positions for 30 years and have not seen that kind of increase in their pay. I want to thank you for your time and everything and your dedication, and we look forward to the next school year getting everybody to where they should be.
Now, I want to say thank you again, Mr. Brown, and as a board as a whole, all nine of us, we totally agree with you. The study is taking place now, and Dr. Bracy met with them again to make sure they have all the information they have today. Matter of fact, they have everything that they need, and we're looking forward to those results so we can put that number forward to city council and try to get our staff where they're supposed to be.
Right, and we're not here just, we want to advocate for everything. If you need us to show up at the meeting when you start putting those numbers out to the city council, just let us know. We'll be there.
You already know we do.
If you can afford to give yourself that type of raise, you should be able to support to put some of that money into the school system.
Thank you, and I will say that our city council liaisons, they stay there in lock step with us with that, so we're in good hopes that they're going to follow through with what they promised as well. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Leslie Tattersfield, Teacher Parkview Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
My issue is about the, what I feel is unfair signing, unfair signing bonus. I, my husband and I moved to Portsmouth in October. I received my Virginia State license in February. I, after that, I personally went to Parkview, that's where I wanted to teach. I was hired in March. I was not, I'm going to read the letter so I don't ramble on, and I'm more consistent. In October, my family and I moved to Virginia. My husband accepted employment here focused on renewable energy. I received my teaching license in February and began working for university instructor while I was applying for teaching positions in Portsmouth. In early March, I took a position with Parkview Elementary. During a faculty meeting on March 18th, about, it was brought to my attention that Portsmouth Public Schools were offering 6,000 signing bonus underway to incentive highly qualified new hires to the district. I am highly qualified, I have my bachelor's in education, both in elementary and sped. I have my master's degree in multi-disciplinary studies. I've been teaching for over 20 years. I've taught abroad and within the United States for the past 10 years. I was teaching in Mexico at an international school. I was never told about the signing bonus. I tried to rectify it with HR, and I was told that I did not qualify, all the signing bonuses were given out already. I said, "Well, am I, do I qualify for the following school year?" They advised me, "No, I did not." I am just baffled at why it was never brought to my attention during the recruiting process. I would have elected to start in '24, '25, but I was just excited to start as soon as possible. Like I said, I followed up with Ms. Walker in HR regarding the signing bonus. It was told there was no more signing bonuses available for this year, and that I did not qualify for next year's signing bonus. Ms. Walker advised me that she discussed it with me over the phone in the initial hiring conversation. It was not brought to my attention. I think I would have remembered a $6,000 signing bonus. I then took it up higher and spoke to Ms. Harrell in hopes of resolving this issue, and was told I was not eligible again. So to summarize the above information, just from my understanding, I was hired in between these two periods. Teachers hired before me received a signing bonus. Teachers being hired now for the next year receive a signing bonus. I'm not receiving a signing bonus, and it's just leaving a very poor taste in my mouth, and I'm very dedicated to Parkview Elementary. I've enjoyed becoming one of the, part of the community there. I've sent out emails to the superintendent. I requested a meeting with the superintendent. My emails have not been, I've not received a response to. So after numerous requests, I just wanted to clarify exactly what the policy is because for me, it's not very fair. And so I'll just leave it at that. I thank you very much for seeing me. This is the first time speaking at the school board. Thank you.
Do we have any board agenda speakers? Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.1 through 5.10 is consent agenda items, and I entertain a motion at this time. Motion made by Ms. Boone, second by Ms. Schumate. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futrell?
Yes.
Ms. Schumate?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I always do that now.
Thank you so much. As a part of our consent agenda, were our student representatives and alternate for the school board, and I would like to take a moment just to introduce them at this time. Our school board representative for our new '24, '25 school year would be Mr. Devonte Peterson. Devonte, you come on up. You come on up. And our alternate would be Azrael Rouse. I'd like to welcome you all to the Portsmouth City School Board, and we look forward to your roles that you will play and the knowledge you will bring to the position and the advice you will give the board on issues especially concerning students. And I'll give you all a chance now to make any comments you have. I know I put you on the spot, I should have told you ahead of time, I'm sorry.
I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, alright.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Alright. Vice Chair Atkinson.
Excuse me, Devonte, I need you to, I need you to say something. You know, you, both of you all are bright, we're excited. Devonte, I'm excited about, you know, your whole grassroots efforts that you mentioned to me and board member Schumate about visiting all schools, making sure that everyone in Portsmouth Public Schools know who, what, who a student representative is. So I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I have to, you are student representative now, so I'm going to apply the pressure on you.
I'll thank you for the opportunity of bringing me here. I'll thank everyone personally for picking me. This is a great opportunity. I hope I'll be, but as much possible, be the best I can, try to be attentive as much as possible, try to balance this score and this. I'll try to, anything, any meeting, anything you need, let me know immediately. I'll reply instantly. I'll just, again, thank you for the excellent opportunity.
I'm sorry, Dr. Whitaker.
Cam, we know what schools you're from.
That's what I was asking.
And also, what aspirations you have after high school. Thank you.
He has on a room blazer.
So I currently attend IC Norfolk High School, and after high school, I plan to pursue a career in nursing, eventually going into travel nursing, and just building my hours and getting as much possible experience as possible.
Alright.
I'm also a proud student of IC Norfolk High School. I plan on going into early childhood education after high school.
Alright. Are you ready to sign this contract now before you graduate? Thank you all so much again, thank you. We'll now move to agenda item 6.1, which is our monthly report curriculum instruction. Dr. DeVries.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members, and Dr. Bracy. You have our highlights for this month in your packets. This evening, I'd like to introduce Dr. Sharie Davis. She is our senior supervisor for gifted education and dual enrollment, and she has some very specific highlights for you in her two areas. So, Dr. Davis.
Good evening to Dr. Bracy and Chairman Dr. Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, esteemed school board members, division senior leadership, and all assembled tonight. I am happy to share some information with you in regards to gifted education and dual enrollment. And I'll first start with gifted education. So this year in gifted education, we have three teachers this year that served the division for grades K through 8. We have five students this summer that will be participating in Camp Launch at the College of William &amp; Mary, which is a two-week summer camp in July. We have three students that have been selected to participate in the Jacobs Ladder Summer enrichment program, and that will be at St. Margaret's School in Tappahannock, Virginia. And so those two programs aimed at middle school students who come from underserved and low-income households. This year in our first college program, we have 104 high school students that were identified as gifted students when they were in elementary school. So Portsmouth Public School have their first teacher endorsement program for gifted education in partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary. These teachers are projected to complete this program in November 2024, and at that time, they will receive a certificate from William &amp; Mary and be able to add that endorsement to their teacher license. This year, we had the privilege to go to all three preschools and provide some enrichment activities at all three preschools, and I would like to thank the Title I Department for collaborating with us to be able to go into the schools to provide those activities for those students. So just to give you a summary of our gifted education department, on the elementary level, grades 3 through 8, we have 578 students identified as gifted, 173 secondary students for a total of 751 students. And our talent pool students, K through, have 148 students. Talent pool are students who show potential capability of being identified as gifted students, and we work with them as well. Also, this summer, we have some students who will be going to the summer residential governor's school. We had 15 students that were recommended, we had eight selected, and seven that accepted the invitation to attend summer residential governor's school. Those students who are in the Virginia Marine Science Program will be at William &amp; Mary. Humanities and Visual Arts will be at Radford University, and Math, Science, and Technology will be at the University of Lynchburg this summer. So if you can indulge me for just a moment, I would like to thank the PSET team for helping me put together this presentation.
The Gifted and Talented Program here in Portsmouth, we are a general intellectual aptitude program, and what that means is we look for children that have proven they have an overall ability to think at certain higher cognitive levels. We are a pull-out program, so we pull the children out usually once a week for an hour or two. Our goal is to meet them at their educational and cognitive level, to challenge them, to make sure that they are not losing their gifts, and we do that through differentiated instruction that focuses more on creativity and problem-solving and collaboration.
The activity we just did was the marshmallow challenge, where you had to stack marshmallows, spaghetti, strings, and tape to make the tallest freestanding tower you can. Gifted helps us with understanding different situations from different angles, different perspectives, allowing us to enhance our mindsets, like in the marshmallow challenge. Normally, people would have just stacked marshmallows on top of each other with maybe added a few strings here and there, but we thought of ways to innovate the design, designed, and actually collaborated on ideas and experiences.
Gifted and talented children have proven that they learn differently. They have a need for intense mental stimulation. When they're sitting in a regular classroom, they get bored. They need that mental stimulation, so they'll find it on their own. The Gifted and Talented Program allows those children, we give them that mental stimulation they need so that they're not finding it elsewhere. We're structuring that thinking appropriately. When the children come in here, they are with like-minded individuals, and I'll never forget, one of my first years in the gifted program, this kid walked in and he looked around my room, and at the end of the first day, he goes, "I'm not weird. These kids are just like me." And that's really, really important for developing adolescents. It helps them develop their sense of self, their sense of belonging, and their sense of community.
My favorite thing about gifted is because it shows who I am and how I learn. I think I learn quicker than others, and I just think I'm a head.
I know that I'm smart, and gifted feels like a new level of achievement. It feels as if I'm validating that thought.
Gifted helps me in some of my other classes by preparing me for any hard questions I can encounter, opening my mindset for any things we may learn in the future.
I love being a gifted teacher in Portsmouth. It's really helped my career, it's deepened my understanding of not only gifted children, but children in general. My goal for when my children leave my classroom is I hope that they know that they're cherished. I want them to know that they're cherished, that they are good enough. A lot of times, because of their asynchronous development, they get very confused, they don't know what's going on, and I want them to know that, yeah, they're weird, but that's a good thing.
Alright, moving on to the second department, dual enrollment. So this year in PPS, we have 308 students that are in the dual enrollment program. It doesn't matter what stage they're at, but we have 308 students in dual enrollment, and here's a breakdown by school. First college enrollment this year, we had 172 students who were in the first college program. These students enrolled in 12 to 14 credits, and we had great success for our students this year as they embarked on post-secondary education. So in early college enrollment, last year, we had 138 students in early college. This year, we had 175 students in early college, and these students are on track to receive their associate's degree. So this is a screenshot of TCC GPAs. This gives you a total of students by school and their GPAs and where they fell this semester. This is just this semester, spring semester. So early college graduates, this year at Churchley, we had 28 graduates, IC Norfolk 5, and Manor High School 6, giving a total of 39. Last year, we had 26 graduates, so we have increased tremendously this school year. So this year, of the 39 students, 31 of those students received the governor's medallion for their academic achievement. So projected for graduating in 2025, we have projected 47 scholars next year that will graduate with an associate's degree. And I just want to thank you all for your support this school year. Thank you to Chair Member Boone and Futrell, who were able to make it to the graduation this year, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. This ends my report.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi, thank you for the beautiful presentation, because I'm competitive like that, but for the numbers, we know that our numbers have increased as a district. Do you know how we compare amongst the other districts? I know we were among the top before.
I haven't had my meeting yet with Ms. Brickhouse yet, so as soon as I get those numbers, I'll get them for you. You know, we were all looking around the room when we were all taking group pictures the day of, to kind of try to see, but once I receive those numbers from TCC, I'll definitely get that information to Dr. DeVries to share with you all.
Okay, thank you, and I have one more question for you. I'm not that, I didn't grow up in a gifted and talented program just because of the school district I came from initially in elementary school. Can you enlighten me a little bit about where the term gifted and talented came from? Because if those small group of students, or however number, are deemed gifted and talented, what does that say about the students that are outside of that, that group? It's just my concern with that terminology, if that's just something we can consider changing or not.
I think giftedness is the word we need to use. It's not all about academics, it's how those students think and how they analyze and how they think critically. We, my teachers are advocates, they go into classrooms, so it's not solely on the classroom teacher, it's on the parent, it's on anyone who knows their capability. We even have students that are twice exceptional, meaning they are either ELL or special education, and they're also deemed as gifted. So when we see students that exhibit specific behaviors, we tend to say, "There's got to be something there with that student." So we have to put eyes on the ground for that. So it's more about being gifted, but it's not about the straight A student. That is not what gifted is about. It goes way beyond that.
Yes, yes, so, and I guess I get that part, it's just the, I don't know the right word, term for this, but if the students are pulled out, I heard the presentation said they're pulled out of the classroom to go into another class, and they're going to this program called gifted and talented, I worry about the perception, thank you, of the student that is not in a gifted and talented.
Okay, so I can address that question for you. So my gifted teachers also go in to work with classroom teachers to provide gifted education as well. So they get to do some co-teaching with the gifted teachers to provide lessons that those kids will get that are pulled out. This year was a challenge because I only had three teachers this year, but they were able to work with specific grade levels at specific schools, specifically those schools who don't have a lot of gifted students that are identified. So we focused on five schools this year to do that, to provide that gifted education with other teachers.
Dr. Whitaker and Vice Chair Atkinson.
I was thinking the same thing that my colleague was thinking, and the reason is because I believe all students have gifts and talents, and so if it's really focusing on how certain students think and how they approach things, I mean, I would agree that maybe we need... I mean, I would agree that maybe we need to change the name of that program, because it does, in a way, I think it kind of stigmatizes students who are not selected, because all students have gifts and talents, just in different ways. And I've, you know, I've always had an issue of that name as well, so.
You know, that's the Virginia Department of Education type of thing, but each one of our levels are called something different. So certain grades are called Discover, and some are called Search, and those fall under our gifted umbrella. So some schools, they hear Discover is their program, and then Search is other programs. So we use those terminologies there, but in this arena, we have to use gifted and talented because that's the terminology. I understand exactly what you're saying, though.
And I have one more question. For TCC, are we still requiring a test for students to enter?
The only test that they have to take is they're taking pre-calculus. They have to take that test to test into that course.
Okay, but there's no, we did away with the tests that they have to take?
Right, right, right. If they want to take pre-calculus, they have to test into that course.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation, love the numbers. I just have a question regarding the TCC program as well. I do see that our first college program, we have a significant amount of students when we first start participating, and then that number declines, so our overall graduation rate looks like about 25 to 30%. I also took a look at like the GPAs, and I seen like a high number that was 2.0 or less. Perhaps could that be that, and this is what we hear from the students even through our student rep interviews, that they don't have a lot of support, and we have heard that, you know, only thing they have is that group text. So I guess what type of, and this is going to be one of my retreat items, what type of support can we give them so they're not in a group text by themselves, so they'll have something else to fall back onto? And like I said, that could be to the decline because of that.
Well, for one, is transition, that's a big thing. They come over there, and it's a big transition for them. So the support that my office gives is, students can come down to my office to receive support from me, and I get them to where they need to go. They have tutoring labs. The other thing that I do is, I actually have professional development with TCC instructors because it's a mindset. They're used to teaching on the college level, but I understand they have high school students in their classroom. So a lot of what I do is help them build relationships with the students, because a lot of times, the students are just afraid to ask questions. And so when I'm able to address that, I communicate with the instructors to help to get them over that hump. So a lot of it, too, is when they choose the course, I guess they have a thought of what they think the course is, and when they get in there, it's very rigorous, and that's part of what college is. So what I do is pretty much meet with them weekly if that's what they need from me, and I get them the support that they need on campus. And so that is part of what I do in my office, and I communicate. I'm the liaison between the student and the instructor.
Okay, and just a follow-up, if our students have a certain amount of interest and TCC doesn't have the enrollment from that, from their end, what I noticed is, TCC has been canceling that course. So is there a certain enrollment number that TCC is looking for? Can they not do the course if we have numbers from our end?
If we have the numbers, it's not going to be a problem. Sometimes it's also instructors, having instructors to actually teach the course. A lot of our students want to get away from online courses, and they want to be in person. So a lot of those courses are online as well. They will cancel courses if they do not have enough seats for students to take it. So if they only have five students in the class, more than likely, they would either ask them to join another section, or they would drop that section. But if we have the numbers, they run the course.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Agenda item 6.2 is recognition of sport award students. And I believe that is, that'd be Dr. Simmons and Ms. Twyman, I believe.
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Chair, Ms. Atkinson, Vice Chair, esteemed members of the board. Gives me great pleasure to stand here and introduce Ms. Twyman, who is our Coordinator of Division Athletics, and she has some very special student athletes to introduce tonight. They are our 2024 state champion outdoor track and field student athletes. Ms. Twyman.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Chair, Ms. Atkinson, Vice Chair, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Bracy, Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am honored to stand before you to recognize the remarkable achievements of six outstanding young women from our schools who have recently become state champions in outdoor track. These athletes have shown exceptional dedication, perseverance, and teamwork throughout the season. Their hard work and commitment have led them to this incredible achievement, and we are immensely proud of their success. Please join me in congratulating these student athletes. If any coaches, athletic directors, or principals are present, you may come up for pictures after each name is called. First, the 2024 VHSL Class III Girls 300-Meter Hurdles State Champion, Jalen Roberts from IC Norcom High School. Where would you all like them to stand for the pictures?
Let me give her just honor. Certificate of Acknowledgement presented to Jada Nicole Howe. Got me out of order, I'm good now. Certificate of Acknowledgement presented to Jalen Victoria Roberts, in recognition of her as a 2024 Class III State Champion in the 300-meter hurdles with a time of 44.84. That was done at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during the 2023-24 Academic Session while in row as a junior at the IC Norcom High School.
Next, the 2024 VHSL Class IV Girls Discus State Champion, Leah Williams from Manor High School. Leah is currently competing in an AAU track meet, so she could not attend tonight's recognition ceremony. Athletic Director Charlene Mitchell Faulkner is accepting on Leah's behalf.
This certificate of acknowledgement is presented to Leah Williams, in recognition of her as a state champion of the outdoor track VHSL Class IV Discus with a throw of 125 and a half during the 2023-24 Academic Session while in row as a freshman at Manor High School.
And last, but certainly not the least, the 2024 VHSL Class IV Girls 4x100-meter Relay State Champions, Jasmine Bright, Bria Reese, Jada Howe, and Trinity Desens from Churchland High School.
All right, I'm going to read the certificates for everyone, but it's presented in recognition as a member of the 2024 Class IV State Champion in the 4x100-meter relay team with a time of 49.09. This was done at the State Outdoor Track and Field Meet during the 2023-24 Academic Session while in row as a sophomore, well, Bria, as a sophomore at Churchland High School. Congratulations, everyone.
Their accomplishments go beyond their athletic prowess. They have also demonstrated exemplary sportsmanship and have been outstanding representatives of our school community. Thank you to their coaches, athletic directors, principals, parents, and supporters who have played a crucial role in their journey. These champions have set a high standard for their peers and have shown that they, that with determination and support, anything is possible. Congratulations to our state champions. We are incredibly proud of you and look forward to seeing your continued success. Thank you.
I want to congratulate you all on your achievement, but even more, I'm excited to invite you all back in the near future to receive your state championship rings.
I love Portsmouth.
Agenda item 7.1 is our monthly report by our Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and Board Members. We're here at our final board meeting of the year, and I want to thank both the board and our staff for all the hard work and efforts in making this year another successful one in our division. My comments here are going to be fewer than usual as we come to a close of the school year, but we're very excited as we have our graduation ceremonies this Saturday, June 15, at the Chartware Rink at Old Dominion University. For those unable to attend, you can always watch the live stream of the ceremonies on Facebook, on our Facebook page at ppsk12.us. And of course, Class of 24, make sure you post your photos at, post your photos to add caps and gowns to share the celebration online with us. I also want to thank our Department of School Leadership, our administrative teams, and our director, and our Department of Auxiliary Services for their many planning meetings and all of their work to make our graduation day a wonderful event for our graduation and our families. As we head into our summer weeks, I also want to remind the public that we move to our 10-hour day with all of our schools and administrative offices, and we're closed on Fridays. You're always welcome to call and schedule appointments during these extended hours as needed with any of our schools. Finally, as we have shared already, tomorrow is our last day of school. I thought the students would clap about that, but. And on behalf of our board and administration, we all wish our students, teachers, and family a happy, safe, and hopefully really fun summer break. We look forward to seeing you back next year for another great year. Thank you, Dr. Patillo. That completes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any board member comments? Ms. Boone.
I, too, would just like to say to the parents and students, have an amazing summer, a safe summer, and I hope that our teachers get a well-needed break as well. So I'm excited about our graduations, as Dr. Bracy mentioned, on Saturday, and congratulations to all of our students who participated in various moving up ceremonies this week. Congratulations to our student representatives who are coming in. I'm excited about you, that is one of my favorite parts of the board. I got to witness firsthand my daughter being in that role a couple of years ago, so I know how that role changes a student's life, so I'm excited to see you guys get into that role. I'm an Excel, so congratulations. A few of us are track moms on the board, so we are excited for all of you who've received awards tonight, so kudos to you all, and have an amazing summer as well.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? So I would like to also close this meeting out, last meeting of the school year, by saying thank you to all of our staff for your hard work and diligence during this school year, and to our board members, I'm excited to let you all know that our date for our groundbreaking of the new CTE Center will be July 29 at 10:00 a.m. And Lauren will be sending out a save the date for the community as well, so they can have that. We're excited about what's coming to our school division and for our students. Thank you all again for joining us, and have a great night.